Go ahead and bring this public hearing to order. This is the -- good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing of the Eugene Planning Commission to consider a package of code amendments related to infill compatibility standards for multifamily developments. Before we begin, I'd like the planning commissioners to introduce themselves and then provide some time for staff to introduce the topic before we begin taking testimonies. My name is Jeff Mills. I'm currently the chairman of the Planning Commission, and I'd like all the other commissioners to introduce themselves.
My name is John Jaworski. I'm a brand-new member on the Planning Commission.
Randy Lettich, vice chair.
Rick Duncan.
Steve Baker.
And Bill Randall.
Tonight, we have members of the city planning staff, President Alyssa Hansen, Kristy Brown, and Lisa Gardner. We'll begin with a brief presentation from staff and then open the public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, please fill out a request to speak form and bring it forward to staff. Excuse me, sorry. Just a reminder that the Planning Commissioners Commission will not make a final decision on this proposed code amendment. We will, however, be making a recommendation to the city council, who will hold their own public hearing before making a final decision. Alyssa?
Let me try that again. Tonight's public hearing is on a package of code amendments related to infill compatibility standards for multifamily developments. There are six topics that are subjects of the proposed amendments, and those are the multifamily, open space standards, allowed intrusions and required setbacks, driveways and parking areas, garbage and recycling screening, a compatible transition between the low-density and higher-density zones in the South University area, and finally, the bicycle parking standards. The Planning Commission previously held two work sessions on these topics last month, and we also solicited feedback from a large interested parties list. Public notice was mailed in accordance with the Eugene Code requirements and also emailed to our interested parties list. All the public comment received up until November 21st is included in tonight's public hearing packet. Since then, we've received actually five pieces of additional testimony, and they should be before the Planning Commission right now. And that includes a letter from Sue Walling regarding the bicycle standards, a letter from the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee regarding the bicycle standards, a letter from Carol Shermer regarding the open space standards and the bicycle standards, a letter from Gordon Anzlo with some general comments and also addressing each of the six topics. And then finally, I just placed in front of you a letter from Teresa Bisho of Arley, and I think she'll be speaking to that tonight. In terms of next steps, after the public hearing is closed, staff will be returning -- you will be returning to a work session that's tentatively scheduled for January 9th, and you'll be working towards a recommendation at that time. Once your recommendation -- you've made your recommendation, there'll be a city council public hearing, and that's tentatively scheduled for February. That's all I have.
Very good. I'd like to open the public hearing of the Eugene Planning Commission. Please give us your name and address before beginning your testimony. Given -- we'll be limiting the speaking time to three minutes per person. If that proves to not be enough, we can make a second round if need be, but I'd like everyone to limit their comments to three minutes. And we ask that you please cease your testimony when the buzzer goes off. We encourage you to submit any written testimony you have as well. First person on the -- with the form is Mr. Paul Conte.
My name is Paul Conte. I live at 1461 West Tenth Avenue. I've previously submitted testimony for your work sessions, and I've put some copies of that, some of it updated into the record tonight. Tonight, I wanted to address a particular topic, and if I have time, I'll go back to the others. And the clock isn't on, so can somebody give me a 15-second wave there? Recent Planning Commission decisions, both of which have been appealed to Luba, have created precedents that would allow zone changes from R1 to R1.5 and from R3 to R.4-4 on practically any lot that is not covered by a refinement plan policy that explicitly restricts the higher zone. These precedents, if upheld by Luba, would create potential for severe destabilization of many areas throughout the city. So I'm recommending that you include in the recommendation to council two very critical repair amendments, if you will, so that this -- these precedents don't get jumped on and pervade throughout the city in a really destructive fashion. The recommended code changes are that R1.5 should be allowed only as part of a planned unit development on lots that are designated as low-density residential. This wouldn't affect medium-density or high-density residential development. Essentially, low-density corresponds to R1, so what this is saying is, in R1 neighborhoods, you would have to go through a PUD to be able to get R1.5. Zone changes to R4 should be allowed only in one of the following three conditions: A, in the core downtown area, or B, where explicitly permitted by a refinement plan, or C, by a city council ordinance that identifies a specific development site or area as appropriate for, quote, "dense urban living" consistent with the R4 purpose statement in Eugene Code, with a dwelling density above the maximum density allowed by the, quote, "limited high-density range," which is the purpose of the -- and range of the R3 zone. Those are really critical. I know some of you think that you took actions in those decisions and findings to protect against them being a precedent, but Chairman Mills pointed out in the OBO case that it doesn't matter what you think you're doing or what you're saying you don't want it to be a precedent. State law requires you to apply consistent findings in any future applications that come in. You will not be able to back away from the decisions, the findings that you made there. And you'll see in at least one of the Luba appeals, in which I'm lead petitioner, how, despite what you thought you were doing in the OBO decision, you've set a precedent that just blows open huge areas throughout the city for basically walk-in, R3 to R4 upzoning. So these are really, really critical. They're as important as most of the other things you have on your table. And I'll stop early, but if there is time for a second round, then I appreciate being able to address a couple other points.
Jeff, last question. Jeff? Yes. Question. Mr. Conte, did I understand you to say that you had some written testimony for us tonight? Oh, thank you. Thank you. Next person is Gordon Anzlo.
I'm Gordon Anzlo. I live at 4493 Paddock Drive in southeast Eugene. I did submit comments earlier today that I think you probably have in front of you, and they do deal with some of the particulars. Surprisingly, I actually agree with at least half of what's proposed, and probably the single one that gives me the most concern has to do with the density provisions. But I really want to -- you can read that, so I want to say some general things that have more to do with the kind of big picture of how each of these little things that you're considering fits into the whole picture, and I'd like to read from my prepared statement on that. Impacting the University of Oregon, the UVO campus is constrained an area in that it's surrounded by existing neighborhoods and the river with limited ability to increase in area. Unlike other campuses with the budding undeveloped areas in which to expand, the UVO has chosen to not attempt to house all of its students on campus, but to devote their limited land area to their primary mission of education. Thus, it falls on private owners in areas surrounding UVO and indeed in areas extending well out on all sides to the south hills, across the river, to Laurel Hill Valley, and well out to the west to provide housing. Obviously, the area closest to UVO is the preferred area for most students to live for logistical reasons, and this should be encouraged for reasons including efficiencies of land use and conservation of resources. The majority of changes to Chapter 9 in recent years have served to make it somewhat more difficult to meet this demand by means of effectively reducing densities and requiring more area devoted to parking and outdoor additional bike parking and outdoor living area. Given that the UVO is not moving and continued increasing enrollment seems to be a reasonable expectation going forward. I'd be interested to hear from the Planning Commission some consideration of the impacts of making it harder to house this population close in and the effects on the surrounding neighborhoods and the impact on transportation of spreading this population out over a wider area at lower densities as opposed to in a smaller area at higher densities close in. Impact on affordability of housing. We've seen in recent years the end of a run-up of housing prices of almost 60 years' duration. While some of this is due to inflation, increase of average area, and a short bubble period before the recent crash, much of this increase has occurred in response to regulatory burden which has affected the supply and demand equation, such as occurs in land supply and cost to bring developed land to market, but also in many thousands of improvements and refinements to building codes in the local land use laws, i.e. the zoning ordinances. During this long period of expansion, some of the impact of the issue of affordability has been obscured by the fact that there were always more willing buyers available to step up, even as some buyers fell by the wayside, unable to afford new housing. We've seen this period come to abrupt and spectacular conclusion, and we now face the reality that much housing is no longer in reach of normal wage-earning Americans. While we see that there are UVO students whose parents are willing to pay higher rents in exchange for convenience to campus, the effects of this demand push up rents all over town, in that the market can't provide housing and an affordable rate to keep supply and demand in balance. And I'm going to cut myself short here because of the time constraints. But again, I will be just interested to hear any comments about the specific and general impact on affordability of housing by really just about anything that you adopt. And the last thing, which you can read about at your leisure, has to do with impact on the region, which I won't go on since I'm past my time. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anzlo. Carolyn Jacobs?
Carolyn Jacobs, 2040 Agit Street. And I'm just going to refresh your memory with this particular picture. This is a picture with which I'm sure many of you are already very familiar. I've brought it back because it's a perfect example of how projects that create this kind of extreme discontinuity between adjacent properties have begun to effectively build a wall across the middle of our neighborhood. On one side of the wall, a ghetto of young transient residents is rising, and on the other side, there is essentially a no-man's land, an area of single-family houses where no family wants to live. On the ghetto side, land prices are high. Obviously, there are profits to be made. In the no-man's land, property values are obviously falling. Okay, there are many things which need to be done to turn the situation around, and six of them are on the table right now. One of the most critical ones is the slope setback proposal number five. This one proposal can eliminate what this picture that I showed you so clearly illustrates, an enormous wall towering over R1 homes and yards. I believe you now have an option three for this proposal. Option number three is a superb, a superb way to thoughtfully design a building in a manner that moves the mass gradually away from the zone boundary while allowing the height to increase. Another critical item is one which eliminates the exemption for open space. The exemption has incentivized designs of the very largest buildings possible, ones which often require variances because not enough room was even left for required landscaping and onsite walkways to the garbage and to the parking. Developers are incentivized to achieve the greatest height, most minimal setbacks, and greatest amount of intrusions, all because the reward is so great. No required open space if you design to 80% of allowed maximum density. Eugene is so out of step with most other cities, including Portland, where the greater the mass of the building, the greater the required open space, i.e., the larger the project, the more amenities required, not the fewer. Eliminate the exemption for open space, and we can also start to change the behavior patterns of congregating young people who will be able to stay, at least in part, onsite instead of every party spilling out into the neighborhood streets. In addition to the six proposals listed, there's another piece of the puzzle which is so obvious in this picture and which I'm asking you to start considering now. That is, that we no -- can I just finish this sentence? We no longer allow solid walls 150 feet long where R1 meets R3 and R4.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Bill Asperger.
Hi. I'm Bill Asperger, 1939 Alder Street here in Eugene. First, let me say that I support all six code changes. Many of these changes were approved as part of the ICS project and then languished due to other priorities. Unfortunately, this delay is costly to the neighborhoods. It's important that these changes be given priority and moved along quickly so further neighborhood damage does not occur. A quick look at development over the past four years in the South University neighborhood shows seven new apartments -- seven new apartments have been built with two more across the street but adjacent to South University. Another South University building is under construction, and one more is currently proposed. These projects have added well over 600 short-term residents to the area, actually closer to 700. Virtually all of these buildings have been built to use as much of a lot as possible. They have maximum, minimum setbacks. Intrusions into the setbacks are exempt from providing open space and do not attempt to transition into the surrounding neighborhood of single-family homes. The net effect is we are seeing massive buildings that have permanently changed the character of our neighborhood. The proposed code changes will go a long way toward making future development more compatible with the neighborhood. Specifically, I'd like to endorse the transition proposal submitted by Commissioner Randall. I think it's referred to as option three. I'm encouraged that both the city and Commissioner Randall have considered the neighborhood's recommendations and then proposed better solutions to our problems, and thank you for that. As to the open space changes, I believe the balconies should be counted as open space only if they are usable. Therefore, in your deliberation, consider putting some minimum dimension on balconies. It seems reasonable that some of the code changes should be applied to the entire city, not just South University or the area surrounding the university, so please consider this when you're making your recommendations. The proposed code changes are critical to preserving Eugene's core neighborhoods. I hope you will recommend these changes to the city council and work to move them along as quickly as possible. And I also have a picture of the apartment which is now under construction that Carolyn showed you, and we've shown you before. This is the type of thing that we really need to protect the neighborhoods against. It really is destructive to our neighborhood. And I'd like to thank you. Can I give this to somebody? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Asperger. Ed McMahon?
Ed McMahon, 1065 River Road. The code amendments before you this evening cover six different topics, as staff presented. And Topic Three, driveway and parking areas; Topic Four, garbage and recycling screening are actually good amendments. My testimony this evening is going to be focused on Topic One, open space, and Topic Six, bicycle parking. As I've testified before, these code amendments will decrease density. In fact, since I've last testified, we've had the opportunity to analyze the effect of these amendments on various actual locations, and I can honestly state that these amendments will decrease density by 10 to 15%. And on smaller infill projects, the density could be affected by as much as 50% in the area town where we need the density more than any other area. On Item Number Six, bicycle parking, if everyone's going to get out of a car and get on a bicycle, maybe we need less auto parking. And I would ask that we strive for a balance that doesn't decrease density. If we definitely need more bicycle parking, is there an opportunity to maybe decrease some of the auto parking? And in closing, I ask that commissioners pay special attention to some of the written testimony that's been submitted. It actually displays and proves my statements on the effect of density and has some very good tweaks that can make these amendments even more positive. Thank you for your commitment to the community. I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. Teresa Bisho?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Teresa Bisho here on behalf of Arley and Company. I did provide a written detailed testimony tonight that you can refer to later, but during my brief time here, I will refer to the illustrative document. In general, our request is to provide greater flexibility for large PUDs, and in particular those in nodal development areas, as opposed to the strict adherence to the multifamily standards. And I'll touch on just a few provisions that are problematic. Requiring open space on the front lot line may hinder the ability to locate open space along the boundary between the R1 and R4 land. And we provided an aerial photo so you could get a grasp of that. It's not always suitable in an underdeveloped area to have it along the front. I did provide some illustrations of a future phase at Crescent Village where we have an urban plaza on one side of the street. The other side of the street, we built right up to that front property line. So compliance with the open space standards as they're written would be a challenge. The second point I want to jump to is indoor common open space. Just want a little tweak to the code with regard to recreation facilities for residents. There's a reference to areas that have ample window glazing and skylights. That assumes a one-story structure, or perhaps you're on the top floor of a building. Our recreation facility at Crescent Village, one of them is on the ground floor. So just some clarification on that. And the code does propose that residents can only access that space and have it count as open space if they don't go out to the sidewalk. But we would like to be able to use the public right-of-way along the street as the access. So just request that change. Regarding private open space, it appears, and I could be wrong, but it appears the code provisions are going towards screening and creating these barriers so people have privacy. And I think the concept behind private open space is that you, as a resident, it's your space, no matter how small, and you access it through your dwelling unit. But it doesn't mean you're private, because if you're choosing to live in an urban place, you want that seven-mile view of the Cascades and Spencer Butte and the open feeling that you get, no matter if you're just on a little balcony. So just hopefully, it's a clarification that the screening of the private open spaces can be a guardrail that meets the building code. Our balconies are not included in our open space, but we want the flexibility to do so in the future, and our residents love the openness of -- thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bisho. Are there any other speakers? Well, with that, then, we'll close the public hearing. And -- You indicated that we might speak a second round. So you got to hear that. I did. Was there anyone that needed more time to speak? I want to make sure that I follow through with what I offered. So we'll take Ms. Bisho first, and then Mr. Conte second. Mr. Asperger, third.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Intrusions and required setbacks. The draft amendments refer to a public alley that works in an established neighborhood, such as near the university. When you're in an outlying area -- I'm sorry. Technically, you closed the public hearing. Can you reopen it?
Thank you, Lisa. I will reopen the hearing. Please proceed.
Okay. This is Teresa Bisho again. Thank you for allowing me a few additional minutes. Regarding intrusions into required setbacks, you're allowing them on public alleys. We're requesting that you allow them on private alleys or shared private driveways. We've given you an illustration. And then also to broaden, we're still allowing in our code chimneys, which are kind of the old way of heating your home or apartment to be in that setback intrusion. What about minor intrusions for energy-efficient building features like the solar shade that we have on our buildings? So just that kind of green building concept. Bike parking, just look a little bit at allowing not-requiring bike racks in cases where the lockable enclosure is for a single business tenant or resident. The last point I really want to make is encourage you -- we've had so much new multifamily construction. Please put in the code a provision that does not have every new building that just got built become a non-conforming structure. Getting financing, retaining financing, even to repair your roof or repaint, we need to allow those property owners to say, yes, I have a conforming building, and when the council adopts this code, if I don't comply with the new 2011 open space standards, my code is not a non-conforming structure. That is so critical. I can't impress enough about that. And the city has done it in the past. You can do it today. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bisho. Mr. Conte.
Good evening again. My name is Paul Conte. Thank you for an opportunity to add a few more words. I didn't want to be the only one, so I waited to see that somebody else raised their hand. I just want to speak at this point, two brief things. First off, please remember that this issue about building heights and parking and so forth has been diluted. The decreases density stuff that has been brought up again tonight is a red herring. It's been shot down. And, you know, let's just pay attention to what the real facts are here. We've had a pretty thorough airing of that kind of question. Then I want to speak to the transition heights. I submitted testimony, which you'd seen previously as well, which lists all of the base zones and their maximum heights. And this problem is one which arises in quite a few circumstances, and it's equally bad whether it's R1 against R4, or R1 against C2, or R2 against R4, wherever it occurs in the city. So I would definitely encourage you to broaden it beyond the university area. I provided a draft version, initial cut, which is two-sided, that shows the, you know, sort of a temperature reading on the seriousness of the potential difference in heights between all of the zones that are in the city. And the front page are the ones that are sort of critical because they more involve residential, and the flip side of it are ones that are probably not as critical at this point. So you may not be able to tackle the whole thing globally, but if you focus in on those ones that are red in that chart, that will help quite a bit. And then finally, I just wanted to mention again the open space requirement. Please, I hope this one is just sails through because it makes no sense at all to be taking away a key amenity that makes it possible to attract people to live and who have economic mobility of where they live to live in compact housing. So there's nobody else that does it that way. It was a huge mistake. I have no idea how it possibly got by in the first place, but that one should be a no-brainer. Ms. Bisho has suggested more flexibility through PUDs, and I think that longer term, probably not in this round, but longer term, that's a great idea to explore. And PUDs might be bifurcated into PUDs that are essentially new development and greenfield type of development versus PUDs that are used to work something into an existing neighborhood. They really are quite different animals because, as the examples that she had brought up, if you've got a large space and you're putting in public open space and you're building across the street from it, that's one circumstance. If you're doing it within a neighborhood, it's another. So that idea of actually giving a little more robustness to PUDs, I think, is a pretty good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conte. Mr. Asperger.
I wanted to make a couple comments about density. Most -- many of the -- excuse me. Many of the buildings that we're seeing built in South University and surrounding us are -- well, the way that density is being monitored or counted right now is by dwelling units, not by the number of people living in it. And when a dwelling unit has three, four, and five bedrooms in it, as many of these buildings that we're seeing have now, there's really a hidden density there. We're not measuring the number of people. We're measuring the number of dwelling units. And also, if the developer wants to increase density, they can build one-bedroom apartments rather than five-bedroom apartments. So I mean, there is a way to get around this sort of thing. As an example, one of the seven buildings that's near us is, I believe it's 17 units and 96 bedrooms. You can't tell me that's not a dense, dense building. Another one is six units, six dwelling units with 27 bedrooms in it. So this is the type of building we're seeing. Maybe it won't be that way in the future, but I think you have to be Maybe it won't be that way in the future, but I think you have to be very cautious when we start talking about density because there's a definite hidden density, not only in the R3, R4, but in the R1 also, where we see rental houses that have five people living in them and sometimes more illegally. Okay. So I think you need to consider, when you think about density, and I know you've talked about it some as far as bedrooms or as far as number of people rather than dwelling units, so I think consider this as you look at these code amendments. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asperger. Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Ed McMahon, 1065 River Road. These code amendments that are before you this evening are the result of a very long process that included an awful lot of compromise. And I'd like to go back to item number five, the compatible transition, for a moment. And our position was this affects such a small area that we're willing to live with this. However, I am hearing some discussion about taking that citywide. And just wanted to put notice out there that if something like that did go citywide, all of a sudden it would become a very major issue for us. And then as far as the density, if you do believe there's anything about a red herring, pay close attention to your written testimony and encourage you to give me a call. I'd love to go over two or three of the projects that we've actually analyzed on actual locations and show you, prove to you how it does affect the density. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. I believe we got everybody. With that, I will now close the public hearing and ask if there are any requests from counselors or questions to staff from commissioners. Excuse me.
I assume at this point what you'd like from us is questions that can be answered between now and when we meet to talk about this?
That would be ideal. Maybe you could answer them now. We'll give that a try, but...
Okay. There was a discussion, Ms. Bishow said, talked about the multifamily housing standards and how they fit into nodal development or ND overlays, which is the area that she was referring to, which is actually one of our few that we have. Could you give us an idea if they're applied any differently or how they really are affected when they are in an ND area?
Okay. And I don't want to speak off the top of my head. I do know...
That's fine. I don't need an answer tonight.
Okay. I will follow up on that one.
If I can continue?
Yes, sir.
I've got three or four. I'd like to maybe get a little better idea, and if it's in the code, you can just give me a reference on how we deal with this common interior space and how that counts as far as open space.
Are you talking about inside buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
And how we sort of count or don't count. I believe there was a comment made that we don't count it if it has public access to it, but we do if it's only interior. And I'd like to kind of understand what that means. Thirdly, I would be interested in sort of the way that we estimated, or if we do estimate, how we deal with balconies and how we sort of determined the size before it's counted as, again, public, or, excuse me, private open space. After traveling a lot, you see a lot of areas where there's a lot of older housing, particularly in Europe and so on, and Japan and everything, where they have small balconies that whenever you're walking down the street, the families are just clustered on these things, and yet they're very small. And so it seems to me that, I'd like to kind of know what that is. And then there was a comment about non-conforming use, and I've worked with this a lot, particularly in In Vision Eugene. It really is a very large problem from new construction, so I'd like to make sure that we don't consider something, and I know we've done it in the past, to make sure that something that was built prior to this is still considered conforming. And would like to actually have some ideas about if, most of our code talks about if a property is partially destroyed for some reason, that you cannot rebuild certain things because if they don't meet new codes. And I've actually had a pretty interesting education by you folks about the difference between a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming situation. And I think that would be a good education to have for the planning commission also because they really are two completely different elements in how we look at things. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? I think that's all. Our deliberation is scheduled for Monday, January 9, 11:30.
Correct.
And so with that... Randy, sorry, I didn't see you there.
Just to note, I won't be at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Is Mr. Belch back by then? I think he is. I don't know. So are we ready to go to the second?
Give us a minute to do a change of...
Transitioning here. Yes. Sorry, what? Thank you. One other point regarding the multifamily code amendments. We're going to close the public record now. We've closed the hearing. We'll also close the public record. No requests were made to extend. Thank you. Tonight. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Is this different than the one that's here? Our information? Steve, is this different than what we have in our packet?
No, I just brought my laptop. For this thing, if I need to refer to a page. Bill has it handy, so I don't think I need to. Let's see if you're going to give us the same. Yeah. You just didn't want it all in the courtyard in the middle surrounded by a building. So I believe we're ready to go.
Steve. The second item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on a metro plan amendment and concurrent zone on the subject property from light medium industrial I-2 zone to a combination of low-density residential R1 zone, medium-density residential R2/PD zone, and commercial zone C2/PD zone. Before I begin the hearing, I'd like to briefly go over the hearing procedure. The decision of the planning commission on these applications is quasi-judicial, so we will use quasi-judicial format for this public hearing in accordance with applicable code requirements. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive relevant evidence and testimony on the applications before us. I want to remind everyone that your testimony must be directed toward the relevant criteria found at EC 9.7730 for the metro plan amendment and EC 9.8865 for the zone change. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted and completed a completed request to speak form to staff. If you wish to speak and you have not already done so, please submit that form now. Once the public hearing is open, speakers will be called in the following order: those in support of the applicant, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the applicant. At the end of testimony, we will ask for any staff response, and then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. I am also supposed to remind everyone that the failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the planning commission and parties to respond may preclude further appeal on that issue. Before we begin, the Eugene Code 9.7065 requires that planning commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or biases, abstentions, or challenges to impartiality. Do any commissioners have anything to disclose?
Commissioner Duncan.
Over the years, I've actually been involved in the appraisal and done quite a bit of consulting on this property for the property owner and prior members of that family, but I don't feel that will in any way hinder my consideration of this zone and plan change and so on. But I believe I have to have agreement from my fellow commissioners.
Everyone agree? Head nods? Okay, we're good to go. Now, staff will provide a brief introduction before we begin testimony. Steve?
Oh, thank you. Steve Oaks, City Eugene Planning Department. The second item on tonight's agenda will be a public hearing on a metro plan and concurrent zone change to change, excuse me, the plan designation and zoning on the subject property from light medium industrial I-2 zoning to a combination of low-density residential R1 zoning of 2.49 acres along the southern portion of the development site, medium-density residential R2 PD zoning on 22.2 acres, and commercial C2 PD zoning on 3.2 acres. Additionally, the tax lot along the Amazon Channel to the north will retain the WP waterside protection overlay. The area subject to this request includes 27.9 acres of the total 40-acre development site located south of West 11th between Bailey Hill Road and Wallace Street, as shown on attachment A and B of the AIS. And as noted in the application, 8.79 acres of R1 low-density residential land along the south border of the development site and 3.55 acres of existing I-2 light medium industrial land along Wallace Street will retain their current zoning and metro plan designation and are not part of this application. Additionally, we have provided several maps to the commissioners that were not in your packet, including the large one which is from the applicant, which they will be using to, it's more detail of what they're going to be showing to you later. Public notice of this proposal was mailed and posted on November 9, 2011, and legal ad was posted in the register guard consistent with Eugene Code requirements. No public testimony has been received to date. The approval criteria to amend the metro plan is at EC 9.7730 and for zone changes is at EC 9.8865. Staff has provided draft findings of compliance with this criterion as attachment C to the AIS. The findings conclude the proposed mix of residential and commercial uses is supported by the policies in the metro plan and provides a community-wide benefit. As the attached findings describe in further detail, staff concludes that the proposed amendment and zone change not only satisfy the necessary approval criteria, but actually enhance the opportunity for this property to fulfill the objectives of the metro plan and statewide planning goals. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of these applications. Unless the planning commission has any questions of staff, this concludes staff's initial presentation.
Questions? Okay, for now. I will now open the public hearing with the applicant and those in support of the applicant. Please give your name and address when you speak. The first form I have here is for Larry Reed. I guess I also wanted to offer that we would try to limit our presentations to three minutes or so. Mr. Duncan.
It's been typical for us in the past on these to allow the applicant and any representative of opposition to have more time and actually appropriate time necessary to develop their case.
Let's go the limit, and since we've got, I've got three requests to speak here, we'll let you go.
I don't think mine would take much more than four minutes at the max. Good evening, planning commission members, city staff. My name is Larry Reed. I'm a principal planner with JRH. We're a transportation and planning and land use planning company. Our address is 4765 Village Plaza Loop, Suite 201, Eugene, Oregon 97401. I represent the property owners Properties Northwest, which is a Oregon limited partnership, and Rexius Forest Byproducts Incorporated. This property is the site of Rexius Sustainable Solutions. In essence, the city has grown up around the industrial site over the years, and the Rexius family now believes the location is no longer viable. Rusty Rexius, which is here, will speak after me and talk a little more about the site. This application is both a metro plan amendment and a rezoning amendment, in other words, amending the zoning map from I-2 light medium industrial to 22.21 acres of medium-density residential as the metro plan designation and R2 PD, which means it's zoned R2 with a planned unit development overlay. In addition to that, there's 3.2 acres of commercial land use metro plan designation and C2 with a PD overlay also. And then there a smaller piece, 2.49 acres of low-density residential, which is being added to the existing eight some acres on the south edge to provide enough depth of property to do basically a low-density residential as part of this mixed-use development. That's a total, as staff set, of 27.9 acres. Our application addressed all the review and approval criteria listed by the code. The application is this total document, which I'm sure you've all read, right? The criteria, as documented, in addition to that criteria that was addressed here, the report also included as part of the public record here, a traffic impact analysis, which is Exhibit J, an environmental or natural features inventory, which is Exhibit I. We also included into the record the West Eugene Collaborative Visioning Study that was done approximately two years ago, which talks about what that group thought for this area. And then the last document, which is included, was the Rexius family commissioned the University of Oregon Community Planning Sign Workshop Group at the university to do a design visioning for the site, which I think was Appendix 2. In short, we concur with staff's assessment of our application. Obviously, we would have not proceeded to make the application if we didn't believe that it met all of the criteria for a metro plan and rezoning. And with that, I'll end my presentation and would be glad to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Rusty Rexius?
Good evening, Rusty Rexius. 1275 Bailey Hill Road is the company address. That's probably what I'm supposed to give, Eugene 97402. Larry did all the detail, so I want to just provide a slightly bigger picture to whatever extent that's helpful in you getting some context around why we're doing what we're doing or at least what we want to do. We've owned this property for almost 80 years. My grandfather bought it when it was farmland. You can come by our office and see a picture of that. It was intended to be an industrial use, and that's what we set out to do, and it's been done in that way very successfully for a long time. It used to be a long ways from the city center, and today it's very much, at least in our mind and experience, it might as well be in the urban core. The trouble with that is that the kind of work that we do, industrial sorts of work, is problematic in a confined and non-industrial area. The maps show we have residential on one side, actually, we have residential on two sides, commercial on another, industrial on a third, and there we are in the middle of a chunk of ground that doesn't feel anymore like it belongs. So we've had a long and difficult process. Some of you are more familiar with that than others. We've been looking for ways to do what we do elsewhere for over 10 years now in an effort to try to be more efficient in what we do, but also be a better member of the community. Lots of times, we have said recently... Lots of times, we have said recently that in our world, sometimes sustainability stinks. And what I mean by that is that the kind of work we do can be problematic to those around us. So, we've thought for a long time that we could be doing better elsewhere, and that's a difficult and arduous process in and of itself, as you probably well know. We had two decisions to make. One of them was, where might we go instead? That's a different conversation. I'm happy to answer questions to that, if that's helpful, but the pertinent question is, what do we do with the property here? And in our estimation, and with the help of a whole lot of people, including the University of Oregon, some of you here, others who have provided excellent advice, it appears that the wisest use of this piece of property is a mixed-use development, much like, well, exactly like we proposed. I was on the West Eugene Collaborative. I was part and continue to be part of Envision Eugene. I have been intimately involved at some level with the MX question, and everywhere I've gone, publicly and privately, everything points to this being the perfect thing to do on this piece of property. From our family's position, it's a great way to maximize a family asset that, from my perspective and my role in the family and in the business, I need to do that. At the same time, it appears to be precisely at every point what the city hopes to do with properties just like ours. So, it makes a lot of sense. We feel like we've been transparent, very open, very honest, very straightforward in what our intentions are. We've tried very hard to reach out to the community. I think we've done that. We have received zero pushback from anyone, anywhere. Not to say that that won't come, but we haven't. In fact, I've only heard very positive and fruitful remarks from folks near and far. And lastly, I've said many times that if there's an opportunity to provide a poster project for the sort of thing that we've been talking around here for a long time, it seems to me this is it. We're prepared to be that sort of guinea pig. We've already been that. We're happy to provide that role. So, my hope is that through this process, first with you all, and importantly, with you all, and then with City Council, that we get the opportunity to move forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rexius. Teresa Bisho?
Hi, I'm Teresa Bisho, here on behalf of Arlene Company. It's exciting to see the vision for the Rexius site that boldly embraces a dynamic new mixed-use area, and it's encouraging to see the significant private investment in planning in this tough economic time. So, I did want to overall lend our support. Arlene Company owns land immediately north of the Rexius site on the south side of the Amazon Creek, and our property extends to West 11th and includes my coffee and Oil Kent Henry. And our dilemma is, our property is zoned C-4, and usually, there might be a concern about R-2, about changing industrial land to R-2, and then putting medium-density housing next to C-4, but really, our land south of the creek probably shouldn't be C-4. I had been hopeful that our property could at least provide perhaps some open space for the medium-density housing. We might work with the Rexius Company. But unfortunately, in the land use code, park and non-publicly-owned open spaces prohibited in C-4, and so unless I'm interpreting it wrong, we can't do that approach. I'm not quite sure how the city does the bike path easement with that code provision. So, my suggestion is, either, as you forward your recommendation to the council, consider a little tweak to add our property as part of the rezone, so you don't have this little 8,000-square-foot area zoned C-4 between the creek and the medium-density housing, if that's possible. If that's not, because there's just too much momentum, and I certainly don't want to slow down the Rexius project proposal, perhaps you could request the City Council to initiate looking at the zoning along the Amazon Creek, at least in this block. The second request I have, there's nothing that I can tell in the record, and I've been kind of busy lately, there's nothing I can tell that will prohibit us from having public access, but I'm hopeful that through the normal subdivision process, that we will finally get public access to our land on the south side of the creek. Otherwise, it really should be part of the city ownership of property along the creek, or we need to figure something out, because the parcel is landlocked. I have waited across the Amazon Creek from, you know, West 11th to our south side, but that's not the best way to go. So, again, we just have overall strong support, very encouraged to see redevelopment occurring, but what do we do with that little C-4 piece? So, unless you have any questions?
Would you be kind enough to point where your property is?
Yes.
And like? Would you be kind enough to point where your property is, please?
I did go along the Amazon Creek. There's vacant land, and then two, the west of that is Oil Kent Henry and my coffee, and then we own all of the vacant land until we get to the, so our tax lot actually goes south of the Amazon Creek and the rest of the rest of the site.
That's the piece.
If you do leave the record open, I would. If you do leave the record open just for a day or two, I can provide you a map that shows our property, and I apologize for not being better prepared this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bisho. Are there any other questions from Commissioners to the applicant or supporters? Mr. Duncan?
No. No procedural questions.
Okay. We've had a request to extend the record, keep the record open for a couple of days.
If someone else had.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a form, didn't see it there. Yes?
My name is Yvonne Barthe, B-A-R-T-H-E, at 3677 Plumtree Drive, and we're right, I'm right behind Rexius, and I think there's a water stream that's right on the opposite side of my back gate. I'd like to know, and there's trees, that is surrounding it. Our street is, no traffic is through. It's a dead end, so we don't have any kind of through traffic, so our crime is down on our street because of that. I'd like to know if we're going to have houses in that area behind us, or are we going to have apartments in that area, because then our privacy will be taken away, and I'd like to know how that's going to affect us, our people, I mean us, on that side of the street. And I don't, this is my first time, so I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
But since there's apartments and houses and are going to be in there, it's just, it's good, but how is it going to be designed so that we at Plumtree could keep it still safe and no traffic or, because our place is very, very, we haven't had any robberies in our street, so I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barthe. Any other speakers? Any rebuttal?
Not rebuttal so much, but clarification on the previous two speakers. One is that the piece that's south of the Amazon is zoned C-4, so that there's probably about eight, maybe 9,000 square feet of usable space south of the Amazon. And I think what Teresa was indicating was that probably the highest and best use, given in the city's wisdom of the C-4 doesn't allow private open space, is to have the city acquire the property as part of the riparian area, which the city, as I understand, City Parks people are now looking at to buy as part of the riparian area along the, that would make the most sense, as opposed to us trying to provide some part of some future development, some type of access to that. The other comment from the lady that just spoke is that the white area on the map is currently zoned R-1, and we decided to keep it that way to provide that buffer between the higher density, avoid the kind of problems that some of the West University neighborhood is suffering because they've got R-2 right up. So, this will allow us to control that development within the context of it all being vacant land. So, just wanted to provide those two pieces of clarification.
Very good. So, at this point, I believe we're to the point where we could close the public hearing and decide if we're going to leave the record open for a period of time or not. Steve?
And maybe with a clarification that the, that there is a request that the record be left open. It will be, need to be a minimum of seven days, so that would then bump the deliberations for the 19th, so.
Commissioner Duncan?
If the person who requested that to be opened would be satisfied that we could close now with the request from staff to supply that map of your ownership, would that be acceptable?
That would be acceptable.
Thanks, Rick. Good. So, with that solution, we'll close the public record. And at this point, we can make a decision whether we're going to go ahead with some I think there's some time, so, Steve?
Just because we are coming back, or scheduled to come back in six days, I think at minimum, it would be good to find out if there's any particular issues you want us to address now. If there's other questions we can answer right here and now, we'll do that, but to get us rolling for that, that would help.
Okay.
We're, if our intent is to kind of still try to get deliberation done before the end of this year, that's pretty much the only day we have left, I think, to make it work, so that's why we've scheduled and the schedule we have. Correct. Now, I'm saying we can go as far as you like tonight. If some of what you have tonight are simply questions, that's fine, too, but if there's also actual deliberation, you can begin that as well.
Very good. I guess the first round then is for questions. Commissioner Duncan?
First, I guess I, just to make sure it's in the record, I would request that staff supplies with the map that we asked for. And then, secondly, just, and I don't need you to come, it'd be nice if you could answer it right now, just I'm curious, is there a way to amend this particular request to include that small piece of land, that C-4 piece that is owned by, I assume it's owned by Arlene Company?
I think the possibility is there to amend the application, but I believe that doing so would require that we renoes, reopen.
That answered my question. Thank you very much. Don't want to do that.
Commissioner Randall?
I think the questions that I have are how this proposal fits our land inventory, and as we've been looking at Envision Eugene and our residential land inventory or industrial land inventory, and how this will shift that, if that's been part of where we've been headed with it, and I just wanted to kind of see how it fits with that whole process.
So, I guess the quick answer to that is, yes, it would, given the timing of it, it would come into the current inventories of both residential land and, I guess, the addition of residential, commercial, and the subtraction of the industrial, and that would be captured in moving forward with the Envision Eugene process.
Steve?
Yeah, I just have a minor issue, but I just want to make sure that we cover all the bases here, and there was an actual features inventory report done in, I guess it was done in the fall, and then there was a subsequent one supposedly done in the spring. It seems like it would be better off if we had the spring report, which is a more detailed report included in the record, so there isn't any issue about natural resources. So, that just seems like it would make sense, because there was some reference to some potential endangered species had been found there before, and their inventory might show that they aren't there, and then that, you know, that's not a potential issue with Luba or with LCDC, you know, or with others, so.
Okay, the only natural features inventory included is the one that you see in there. It references a study in the spring, but that's not included in, I guess, in the record currently.
Okay.
Yes, I would just add that the PUD criteria that would be applied would allow for further review of that and require additional study at the time of future development, so we will be looking at that question again and responding to the policies as they relate to an actual development plan, so this won't be the last opportunity to look at that sort of evidence.
Commissioner Lettich?
Yeah, excuse me, I have had a chance to review the application materials, and I have to say that in seven years, after reviewing significant proposals like this, metro plan amendment and zone change, I don't recall that there's ever been one that's been as thoroughly addressed, adequately addressed, and has met with no opposition. And I, you know, usually, I have a whole bunch of questions. I don't have any. I think the AIS was very well-written, the application was thoroughly-prepared, and frankly, I'm ready to move on tonight if we want to go that far.
I just want a clarification on the answer that was given to the loss of the industrial land, which you meant by captured forward. Does that just mean whatever we've lost will be added to what's needed in the future? I wasn't sure what that answer meant.
All right, as a clarification, it will be, I guess, the current inventory of industrial land would be reduced, and what, I guess, what you'll see and what City Council will see as part of the Envision Eugene process would reflect that loss and would also reflect the addition of the residential land. So, it would be kind of a living inventory moving forward, so it would be included.
And just to add to that, just so you're aware, that we currently have a surplus of industrial land, so what would remain is just a reduced surplus. It wouldn't actually add to our need. We actually have a surplus at this point.
So, that means you're not looking for new industrial land. I thought that's what was happening in what I saw in Envision Eugene.
A little more complicated answer to that. From purely, yeah, from purely an inventory standpoint, the city has a surplus of industrial land. What type of industrial land we have and the types we're trying to seek in the future leads us to a different answer. So, for tonight, and how it's relevant here, is really looking strictly at kind of our gross numbers. Envision Eugene digs much deeper. It looks at a much more fine-grained approach for the types of industrial lands we're trying to seek, and there are certain categories of lands, i.e. larger parcels of land, that we currently don't have. So, it does sound a little different to talk about Envision Eugene on one hand, and this particular application, but it's really that Envision Eugene is looking much deeper at the range and types of industrial lands we have.
And specifically parcel sizes, you just said.
Commissioner Duncan?
I think a little more clarity from my side, too, is that those inventories have not been adopted yet. So, they cannot be considered in this finding. We have to use the old adopted inventories at this point, and I think if I remember it, it's in the record, but the adopted inventories still show that we have a significant amount of industrial land, but in fact have, I think, I don't almost a negative of multifamily for the old, from the old housing studies back in 2000.
This proposal only would add in terms of the residential, so we didn't evaluate any reduction to the existing adopted residential inventory, and the reduction for the industrial is only, it essentially boils down to a swath of about nine and a half acres that we're removing from the older adopted inventory. And that's summarized in the findings that you've got on the packet.
Commissioner Baker?
I just wanted to clarify, even though we can't consider it, the parcels we're looking at are much, much larger than this, I mean, the size of industrial parcels that we're interested in adding have no relationship to the size of this parcel. This is a very, very small parcel compared to those, so it really wouldn't, you know, would, in this case, I don't think it would be that relevant.
Commissioner Lettich?
Well, I'll try it. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the City Council that we approve the Plan Amendment and Zone Change requests for the Rexius site, Amazon Meadows, it's Planning Action MA-11-2 and Z-11-4.
Commissioner Randall?
And I will second that.
Motion is up for discussion. I guess I'll speak, I feel like I'm being asked to deliberate with one eye closed here. I think everything that's been said, I guess I should back up a moment and compliment the Rexius group for the excellent work that they've done in this application. I want to second what Commissioner Lettich said regarding that. So, I guess my qualm is that we are dealing with a record that is old, and we know that there's a new need. And so, that's kind of a sense that I have, that I'm not being allowed to look forward, I'm having to look back. Having said that, it's also pointed out that the size of industrial, the land change in the inventory is really under 10 acres or right at 10 acres, and our real dilemma is in the 20-plus acre realm for the most part. Go ahead, Gabe.
Can you clarify? You mentioned the old record. Are you referring to the...
I mean, the current inventory. The current inventory, which is based upon work that was done, how long ago?
I believe 1993, early 90s. But as a legal matter, I mean, I believe that the criteria require that we evaluate it under those existing rules.
I understand that, and that is, I understand that we are legally bound to do that, but I'm still feeling like I'm having to kind of close one eye to do it, given that there's been a lot of learning done since 1993. So, that'd be my only comment about this. I have nothing other, nothing else. Are there any other comments? Are we ready for a vote? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Carries unanimous. Both Steves, very good work on this one.
Did you say Gabe, too?
I did. With that, I believe we're, our work is done here. Are there any items for staff before we gavel? Any staff have anything for us? Ending adjournments. Thank you all.